All right, it is six o'clock. I will call the Sartell City Council meeting to order. Please rise for Pledge of Allegiance. Council, next order of business would be the agenda review and adoption. I'll look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. We have no one registered for open forum public comment. Onto special presentations. We have three tonight. The first is swearing in of Officer Bartlett.
So for those of you that don't remember Taylor, he was a community service officer when there was a period of time, decided that he loved our department so much and wanted to progressively enjoy within the community and help the community members even more than he had previously as a CSO. So he's got two weeks left of what we call the shadow phase, meaning there's an officer assigned to him for his last couple of weeks of playing close. He does all the work. You wouldn't be here tonight if we hadn't known that Taylor was not going to make it the final couple of weeks here. So Taylor, congratulations again.
Mayor, members of the council, good evening. If I could have Lieutenant Kelly Mater, Officer Adam Vanavreedy, and Officer Shelby Lane step to the front, as well as Elise Eitenauer, Preston Dilly, Stephanie Ruck, and Travis Penny, please. It's like we're missing a few tonight, huh? Right. So it's my privilege to be here tonight to provide some awards to several individuals from the Sartell Police Department, as well as the school district, who stepped in to help several individuals in the audience, specifically one gentleman. If you want to stand at this point. This is a gentleman that the officers and staff at the school district helped. So let me read the combination for you. "I'm writing to commend you for your actions on February 7th, 2023, at approximately 10:34 a.m. Sartell officers were dispatched to the Sartell School District Office located at 212 Third Avenue North in the city of Sartell. Staff member Travis Penny was walking in the hall and located a male down on the ground in the hallway. He then notified Stephanie Ruck of the incident, who called 911 and relayed important information to the dispatchers, and that is also when Elise Eitenauer and Preston Dilly responded with the AED. While officers were en route, they were advised that the male was gasping for air and his lips were turning blue. Just prior to officer's arrival, they were given another update that they were now beginning CPR and that they had an AED on scene and that it was advising to administer a shock. While, when Officer Shelby Lane arrived on scene, she found Elise Eitenauer and Preston Dilly administering CPR. While Preston continued trussed compressions, Officer Lane inserted an oral airway and provided oxygen via an Ambu bag. During this time, the AED advised to administer a second shock, which was done by Elise. Officer Adam Vanavreedy then arrived on scene and took over chest compressions for Preston and CPR was continued. You arrived with Mayo ambulance and assisted with providing oxygen to the patient and placing a Lucas machine onto the patient, which then took over chest compressions." That was Lieutenant Mater's arrival. "A third shock was advised during this time and administered by Mayo staff and a fourth shock shortly afterwards. At this time, a pulse was completed. It was found to be strong and the patient started to breathe on his own. All of your quick thinking in this situation avoided a potential tragedy. Your roles in public safety and education share a commonality that is to help people. They also reflect your professionalism and attributes that are shared by those in your field. So tonight, I'm proud to present you with the Sartell Police Department Life Saving Award. Congratulations."
All right, and congratulations to all and thank you to everyone that was involved there. The third special presentation tonight is recognition of Chief Hughes' retirement. With that, I know some council members wanted to say a couple words, parting words. This will be Chief Hughes' final council meeting with us tonight. And so we'll start down here. Council, if you have a couple of words to offer.
Chief Hughes, I just wanted to say thank you for all your years of service and keeping our community safe. All your years of not only hiring but developing quality police officers that have really made a culture at our police department that is well revered in our community. And, you know, presentations like tonight, I know, have been often in your career because of what you guys do each and every day. And the leadership of that department is so important and you did it really, really well. Scaling a department in a city that has grown so much in your tenure, not only speaks to your aptitude and ability, but really your character and integrity. And so I know we're leaving, you're leaving us into retirement. You will be missed, but I think you'll leave a legacy in those that you left behind. And so we just wish you all the best in your retirement, sir.
Yeah, Chief Hughes, I can't say enough. I've been in council for two years and there's numerous events like this that truly show the impact you've had, not on the department, but on the city as well. And I try to say words to say thank you, but I don't think words can describe the effect that you've had on us as individuals, the city, young officers, old officers, all in between. So, thank you.
Chief, you shared a few weeks ago in a meeting that when you started in Sartell, it was considered a village. And obviously, we've grown a lot since then and a lot of that growth is attributable to your work and everything you've done for Sartell. So thank you and congratulations on your retirement and enjoy a very well-deserved retirement. Thank you.
Chief, thank you for your service and for the legacy you've left us and created here in our public safety community across the board. We have a wonderful department and you've set us up for success to go into the future and grow. So thank you very much for your service.
And Chief, I had to write mine. I wasn't going to ad lib this. And I think Anna bought a lottery ticket today. She said that if I get emotional, it'll be worth a lottery or she'll have an opportunity to win the lottery. So we're going to try and get through this. But as many others have said, just, I don't think we can express our gratitude enough to you for everything you've done. When Chief Hughes was hired on February 9th of 1991, I was six years old. Sartell's population was 5,834, and I believe Pinecone Road ended right out here at 2 and 1/2 Street North. By all definitions, we were a small town. At the time, Sartell Police Department had six licensed police officers with a single admin support staff member. Compare that to today's force of 22 licensed police officers, one community service officer, three admin staff support members, and 15 reserve officers. Our calls for service and the demand on our officers have exploded over the last 32 years that you've been part of the department. Furthermore, during his tenure with Sartell Police Department, we went from two marked squad cars to 12 marked squad cars. From one unmarked squad car to seven unmarked squad cars. He has literally held every leadership position with the city of Sartell, or excuse me, Sartell Police Department, over his 32-year career. In 1996, then Patrol Officer Hughes was promoted to sergeant position. By early 2000, then Sergeant Hughes was promoted to lieutenant position. And in less than four years, on January 30th, 2004, he became the third police chief in Sartell's history. What hasn't changed, or more accurately stated, what has flourished over the past nearly two decades that Chief Hughes has led the Sartell Police Department, would be the community support for his department. In nearly every aspect of the job, Chief Hughes led from the front. This couldn't be more recognized than through his vast community engagement efforts. Chief Hughes' guidance and commitment is a key reason why Sartell Police Department has grown from a small community department to a well-recognized, well-trained, desired destination for many in law enforcement field and why our community continues to show them love and support. With every hat I have to wear, from resident to firefighter to mayor and to the father of young kids growing up in our community, I want to thank you. I want to thank you for everything you've done for our community, for our public safety teams, for the youth who run around our neighborhoods without the need to fear for their safety. Over the past two decades, you have single-handedly had the largest individual impact on our community. For all that, I salute you. I congratulate you. And hell, if they weren't here, I'd probably hug you. But I'll close, and possibly the last time I'll say this, as it's your last council meeting, thank you, Chief Hughes. And with that, we have a special presentation for you. So council, if you want to maybe meander down and get a picture with him. I'll just turn around quick. But as you can see on the back, we're captured some feedback from council, department heads. This will be at your going away party as well for additional people to write on to commemorate all you've done in the city of Sartell. So it's really cool. Thank you.
One thing I have to correct the mayor on is... One more time in front of the mayor. Maybe not the only time, but as chief, probably. He talked about single-handedly doing some things or making major change. It wouldn't be without everybody seeing the package of what I'm wearing. Whether it's a white uniform, blue uniform... plain clothes. It doesn't matter what they're wearing. Everybody has a certain role at the department. They do it well. I think I didn't know Haley was here. That's why you guys... She was here when I got the chief's job. So she was sitting on a lap trying to be quiet and not cry. So it's good that you are not crying. You're not crying tonight, right?
I'm not crying right now. I'll see you later.
But I have to say that the community's been great, that the people I work with is the thing I've been missing most about this role. The headaches that come with being a chief for so long are there all the time. It's going to be nice to be able to sit back and relax, head off the reins of some people, and enjoy retirement. So thank you again tonight. I appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, council, on to approval of city council minutes. We had February 27th regular meeting, February 27th special meeting, and March 1st special meeting. I'll take those all as one if there's a desire.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Item six, consent agenda. I've heard polling B, F, and H. Are there any others?
Ryan, was that B as in boy or D?
Sorry, B as in boy, F as in fox, H as in henry.
Got it.
Otherwise, I'd look for a motion to approve A through K with the exception of B, F, and H.
Second it.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item B. Jed, I think that was yours.
Yes, just a quick question on other entities that can operate this license. It was listed as PCPA. Pinecone Central Park Association was listed in that document, which I know is a entity that has been becoming or is dissolved. And so didn't know if that needed to be in there. And if it did, then we probably need to look at other users of that entity space as well, like SBA and others.
Yeah, PCPA must have been mistakenly put there. They wouldn't be the ones holding the liquor license. It would be the city of Sartell holding the liquor license.
Yeah, I think it said it was holding, but I think it was later on. I can look up specifically. I don't have it in front of me, but on the other authorized users or implement, or people who have actual stake in the property, I believe, you list a PCPA.
I see the spot where it's listed. So they're listed until they're dissolved, but then going forward, they would be removed under any person applicants have title or interest in the furniture fixtures or equipment and licensed premises. But after this year, once the official dissolution is done, then it would just be city of Sartell.
When it references equipment and other things on these facilities, are other entities, should they be listed as well?
I think this is just in relation to primarily the concessions building. And so we've restricted it to just those two as the main operations there.
Okay.
Good question.
Does that fall off? Does Pinecone Central Park Association fall off automatically? Or would we make a motion to remove them when they dissolve?
It will fall off automatically once they dissolve as an actual organization.
Okay.
Which is in the works right now. Our legal team's working on it with PCPA president.
Any other questions on B? If not, I would look for a motion on item B.
I'll move it.
To approve?
Yes, sorry.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Item F. This is grant resolution. There were four different grants looking to apply for, for the mill site, which will be ownership of in the near future. Council, the reason I pulled this, I guess, is twofold. One is I had a question on one of the grants. Second is want to make sure we, as a council, are aligned that we're applying for a grant. Should we win the grant? Want to make sure we're willing, capable, and ready to spend the money or our portion of the grant. The one in particular is the 50-50 match, which would be $350,000 in match dollar-for-dollar, if I recall correctly. Anna and I had some conversation. There's not a, at the time of our conversation, there wasn't a defined purpose on that or a project, but maybe that's changed.
Yeah, Mayor members of the council. So timing on this one is a bit interesting. As Ryan mentioned, the grants all close March 31st. You have to apply by March 31st. We anticipate closing sometime between now and then. And then they don't come up for another year. And as we know, there's a surplus of funds for a lot of these different grant programs. So the timing is opportune for us to submit applications. This would be specifically for the mill site, so not the Fourth Avenue property, and specifically for trail improvements and outdoor recreation improvements. So... So, connecting the pedestrian bridge via a trail within the hundred-foot buffer. So, that would be for the pavement of the trail and construction of that trail. Also likely installation of utilities underneath it that would stub out to the development area, and then leading towards park property and dock out to the Mississippi. Now, of note is that that outdoor recreation grant, that one's the fifty-fifty, the highest amount. You could apply for that in future years. Like, that's a pretty regular grant process as we get more defined in our process, because as you know, we're still working with Anita in the very beginning stages of that development work of how we want that property to completely look. We know that there's a hundred-foot buffer off of the Mississippi River, so it's an ideal place for the trail portion of it, but if we want to get further down the line on some of those development features, we could certainly wait to future years to apply. We just, this is the only meeting in March. For us, we have to have these resolutions and our apply for the funding. So, you could do, the maximum amount is the seven hundred and three hundred and fifty. You could do any amount there within. April could cover some of the more specific items that we'd be applying for. Or you could just wait for future years to apply for it until we get further along with some of Anita's work for the redevelopment study. And then, the intent is for the cost to be paid out of the Property Development Fund, which is the fund that was separated out earlier this year, end of last year, for the work on these sites. But also know that our intent is that we would be paying for these matching funds with proceeds from the sale of some of the Fourth Avenue or Mill Site property. So, there's a little bit of a unknown there, because we don't know what those properties will sell for. So, I think we transferred over one, one point two million, and then nine hundred and fifty thousand of that will go to the
For purchase.
Purchase, so you can kind of get an idea of what we have left over in there without selling any properties.
So, the recreation grant, which is up to seven hundred thousand, fifty-fifty match, is that the one we had previously won for?
Watab.
No, Soccer River Regional Park?
I think that, I think that's a different one. I actually think it's the one that we were funded for the Watab Park, but April, do you want to speak to some of the more specifics around what would be applied for?
Yeah, absolutely. Mayor members of the council, out of the four grants, we're looking at the DNR local trail connection. That one we'd be looking to use to pay for the trail within that hundred-foot buffer running north and south. The regional trail grant would be to pay for the trail from the pedestrian bridge, connecting it to Benton Drive, since that connects regional systems on either side of the river. The LCCMR grant and the outdoor recreation grant. LCCMR, you'd be looking at berm screening between that green corridor and the development vegetation enhancements, lighting enhancements along that parkway and that trail system. For the outdoor recreational grant, we were looking at extending utilities, bathroom facility, shelters, docks, those sort of more park-type improvements.
April, if we were to receive those grants, what is the timing on use of the dollars?
So, if we apply, we would find out late fall. If we were awarded those funds, they would be twenty twenty-four funds, and there's usually two to, there's two to three years to spend those, so we would have twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, potentially twenty twenty-six, depending on the grant that is applied for.
Thank you.
Council, I got my questions answered on it. I guess knowing that we'd have multi-years to spend the grant or to cover our portion of it, I have more comfort, and knowing that the items I heard listed there, in my opinion, are certainly needed to develop that site out. Any other questions, comments on item F?
Yeah, I think I'll just make a comment of, you know, obviously, this property has a lot of different needs, and we're committed to developing once the purchase happens in the years that we have it. But I do think that the question that you ask is an important one, as we continue to forge ahead in the grant process of ensuring that we do have specific projects in mind when we do with grants. I think in this project, we'll have plenty of things to utilize those funds for. But I think sometimes we receive grants and potentially our match to that has not been decided on, and obviously, when we receive money, it may dictate some of the priorities of our projects. And I think, as we work through the capital plan, Rob, I think some of the things that we do is that future planning and having some things focused specifically when we're asking for these grants is really imperative, so that we don't find ourselves in a place of looking for a project and matching grant funds because we received them. So, I think it's a great question on this project, however. I'm like you, I'm comfortable with that.
Anything else? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve item F as stated. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of item F?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Item H, Tim?
Yeah, I pulled this. I just wanted a little bit more clarification on the process and and understanding of what exactly the the plan was for the bonding.
Yeah, so Solutions Behavioral Health Legal Council reached out to myself and Anna, and asked if we had the capacity to take out conduit debt to benefit them to finance their cost of construction. They're asking for an amount not to exceed three million, and the bonds would be paid solely from Solutions Behavioral Health, so there wouldn't be a commitment, or the city wouldn't be compelled to pay the bonds or interest back. It's in their benefit because they're taking advantage of our tax-free financing, whereas if they were to go to the market, they would have to pay taxes on such bonds. Since we weren't bonding this year, it still allows us to become bank-qualified, so there's no risk to the city with the financing this year.
Okay.
I'll add to that. We've done it for a couple of other entities in the city. And I know that some of your questions were some that I've had, is what's our overall risk? Financially, there's not a risk, and also from a rating perspective, there's not a risk, or our our ability to bond in the future, it's not eating up our availability either.
Yep, it doesn't count against our statutory debt limit. I've reviewed it with our municipal advisors at Northland Securities, and it's consistent with all of our policies in terms of conduit debt, so really no risk to the city, just to reiterate that.
Okay.
Any other questions on item H? Seeing none, would look for a motion to approve item H?
I'll make that motion to approve item H.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. On to old business, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four strategic initiatives.
Mayor members of the council, you have in front of you the proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four strategic plan and initiatives. We've reviewed these a couple of times in workshop, and so bringing them forward now for actual formal approval and public discussion, changing our format a little bit on our strategic planning, so this would be a two-year strategic plan and initiatives with it, identifying pillars, values, and strategies, strategic initiatives that we believe as a council and city that we're working towards. With those pillars being the strong foundation, such as our city infrastructure, facilities, technology, and equipment, reliable services that enhance the safety, well-being, and quality of life for the city, livable city that fosters healthy, connected, and emerging development that enriches our lives of our residents, and then also better-together pillar, which is fostering inclusive, informed, and engaged community. With that, we identified the values of stewardship, integrity, and well-being, which then created and built into our strategic initiatives from each department within the community, or within our city. So, you'll see those initiatives on the last few pages there. Through the workshop discussions, we've also added a performance measures section. Some of these performance measures are the performance measures that we actually measure already for local government aid, and then also measures that we have added on there that we thought as a council and staff were important for us to be measuring just overall as efficiency and effectiveness of our government operations. And so, we added on those performance measures on the end. So, you can see those on the last page there, page thirteen of the total strategic initiatives. So, I'd open it up for discussion, but also preface this with, this is our first time of doing it in this format, and the intent is that this will be really fluid and flexible for us as we navigate through this, especially since this is kind of the first part, starting off into our full budget planning process. So, next will be the taking these strategic initiatives into our capital improvement planning, into our budgeting, into our preliminary levy, and into our final levy. I anticipate that next year, as we review these in the second year of the strategic plan, we'll probably have some adjustments we need to make, once you guys have gone through that full process and involving council from beginning to end. So, just know that by no means is this meant to be a, you know, strict, forceful end-all-be-all plan. I anticipate that you guys will have some fluidity as we go through it, and you learn more about the different capital planning efforts going into each of these. And then, our intent is that we'd also keep you updated, especially on the performance measures as we're navigating throughout the year. So, open it up for questions, comments, edits, concerns, and then we would just ask for a motion and second for approval once we're at a comfortable spot.
Council, any discussions to kick off with? Is there a motion?
I think I'll also just comment quickly on, I'm happy that we're starting this process, and it does need to be a fluid and agile document, and really from the perspective of staff, right, does this strategic plan oftentimes is for staff specifically? Does it give you the freedom to operate within a framework? And then, does it have the ability for council to influence and impact over time? So, as you said, that will be a working, a working model as we go through it this first time, but I'm glad that we're starting this process. So, I will make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, I know we've, as a council, reviewed this in workshop a number of times, so I'd echo Jed's comments of, let's keep reviewing it now that it's in play, and refine it over time. I think it'll really help as new, you know, we go through election cycles or onboarding of new staff, new council members. Here's what's in play, here's what we're working towards, and provide that strategic direction. Council, we have a motion and a second. Seeing no other further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Lift station number one, surge tank award. Boy, that sounds exciting.
After the awards ceremonies, yeah, this is real exciting.
Should have led off with this one.
But necessary, yeah. You'd have emptied the room before everybody left. All right, you've seen this before, but we have open bids. We'll go through those bids, and then we're going to ask for a consideration for awards so we can move forward to construction. I'll do a real quick summary of the project. As you know, it's at the main lift station, which is near the roundabout by one hundred and twenty and County Road One. What we have there is a situation where when the pumps shut off, it creates a vacuum in the forest main. And that vacuum in the forest main is a big negative spike in pressure, so the solution we have is to create a tank that's full of wastewater, and when those pumps shut off and that fluid is still moving, that fills the void, and the pressure just goes to nothing. So, it'll, it's good for longevity of that system, which is our only point into the city of Saint Cloud with our wastewater, a lot of fluid every day. So, on that site, we're going to put a new building, a pre-engineered building. That will be, you see in the red where the new building is and where the existing lift station is. I thought I had another drawing. Oh, I did. Okay, so I moved it to the back. We had two bids. You saw those, Manly Construction, Magna Construction, excuse me, for one point five eight million, and Eagle Construction for one six four. Magna was actually the original contractor who built the lift station. We've worked with him a bunch on various plant projects, so we're real comfortable with them. I've got the overall project budget attached here, showing here. It's pretty much what we had estimated when we went out for plans. The project as the design went on creeped up a bit, but we've worked with Rob and financing and John to make sure we've got the city sewer funds to cover this. So, total project, which now we estimate is about one point eight four million, and the schedule, assuming we get an award today, we will be meeting right away with the contractor, putting together those documents so we can order that building in April, because it's going to take, you know, ten, eleven months to get that building, which will be the building and the tank. Site construction, getting it ready, we'll do that this summer, finish up in the fall, and be ready about a year from now to install the building and put it into service with the final completion in the summer of twenty-four. So, what we're looking for today is answering your questions, of course, and then look for an award with the resolution that was included in your packet, and then the related engineering work that would be needed to coordinate the construction. With that, I'll open up for questions.
Council, what questions do we have?
Will there be any impact on the traffic in the city of Sartell this summer?
Great question.
Well, I'm going to keep my response specific to this project. This project will not impact traffic.
Excellent. I motion, I make a motion to pass it.
Any other questions? I've got one on the, so to get us to one point eight five eight, you mentioned costs have gone up. What, what's driving that? From where you projected it would be?
Well, actually, that what, it wasn't necessarily a cost of risen, but it's more of as we developed the project and figured out what the actual scope of the project was going to be, that's what was the driver. So, it, materials, I think, I'm hoping that they've kind of mellowed out a little bit as far as the spike. I think what we're seeing more is the delivery times. This number will be set, but it's still delivery times that have always been the challenge here this summer, and even you've seen, I would have guessed five years ago, there was no way it would take eleven months to get that building.
And then, in our packets, I see it's broken down into three kind of financial areas, design, then there's construction, and then there's bidding and construction engineering. Is the design and bidding, construction, engineering, that's SEH?
Yes.
Fees? Okay. And then probably the last one I have is, we continue to break that pipe every couple of years. I don't know, would it knock on? Are we sure this is the solution? Or is this a best guess at solution?
So, we went through a lot of modeling scenarios, and John asked those very questions. Is this the solution, or can an air relief valve do it? An air relief valve just doesn't have the capacity to fill that vacuum. Now, will this help? Absolutely, this is going to help. Is there other things that could happen at the forest main? There are, but from that vacuum spike, and it's going to solve that problem.
Okay. I think you know where I'm going. At almost one point nine million dollars, in three years, it breaks again, we're going to have a very uneasy finance department.
Well, it's, and we've probably been in front of you several months ahead of time, but we really, we did a lot of modeling and making sure that, I was new to the project too, and I'm like John would, show me this is going to work. I'm convinced that through the process we did, through the design and the review and the model, it's going to relieve that, that vacuum.
And so, I don't want to get too deep in the details of that sewer line, but what I understand of it is that it, it will cycle through, right, so it shuts off, which then creates a negative pressure. And that's at our current capacity that's flowing to Saint Cloud.
Yes.
The modeling you did, what does it lead to for growth, right? I hear, hey, by fifteen years, we're going to be up another twenty-five or fifteen thousand people, so.
Two, two things to answer that question. One, we likely will be looking at a second connection into Saint Cloud, so not all the eggs in one basket. Secondly, if you're looking at top right drawing, that's looking down. The bottom one is the current tank, or the proposed initial tank. The second one would be a future tanks to allow for growth and future expansion of that lift station. But I'll be honest with you, we're going to look really hard at a second connection into Saint Cloud.
Add a second tank?
Yeah, probably. Yeah, probably.
Okay. Uh, counsel, that's all the questions I have. Uh, any other questions from? Counsel? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve list station one surge tank award. Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, if that carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, last item under old business is Heritage, Heritage Drive Trail Plan. Approval and authorization for bids.
Uh, good evening, mayor, members of the council. Uh, for your consideration this evening is the Heritage Drive, uh, trail plans for approval and then also, um, authorization to bid. Um, this evening I have Hunter Lund here with me. Uh, he's a graduate engineer in our office and was the lead designer on this project. Um, so to start off, I'm going to let Hunter give you an overview of the project and the plans.
Thank you, April. Good evening, uh, mayor, members of the council. Um, so this particular project involves, uh, roughly half a mile construction of a, um, bituminous trail just south of Heritage Drive from Huntington Drive to Amber Avenue South. And then there's two proposed crossings of Heritage Drive pedestrian improve, improvement plans, um, at Seventh Avenue South and at Connecticut Avenue South. Looking a little bit into the details of this trail, um, proposed is a 10-foot wide bituminous trail. Um, Heritage Drive in this particular section is a rural section roadway. Uh, so you can see the existing ditch in that top photo. Um, the plan would be to leave separation between the trail and the existing roadway and have that ditch in between there, um, keeping the trail on the south side of the ditch, uh, for the majority of the trail corridor. There is one particular location, um, where we plan to install some new curb and bring the trail up against, um, that new curb. And I'll, um, go into more detail on that in a few slides. Um, as mentioned, the roadway currently is a rural section road, um, but the trail was planned with a future urban section in mind, um, just keeping in mind that sometime, um, before the life of this trail is up, that road could be reconstructed. Um, so that was taken into consideration with this design. Looking at some of the details and just the alignment of this trail, um, just west of Huntington Drive, there is an existing 10-foot bituminous trail. Uh, so we would plan to connect to that system, um, carry it across Huntington Drive with a pedestrian, um, crossing. There's a sidewalk, as you can see on Huntington Drive there, we'd connect into that. And then, um, as I mentioned, that trail would follow kind of the south side of that ditch. Uh, there is some existing storm sewer in the top right of your screen. Uh, we plan to connect to that existing storm sewer to account for the drainage in this, um, particular section. There are some curves in the trail in this area, uh, that's, there are existing water main and sanitary sewer manholes throughout this ditch. Um, and so that's simply to avoid the sanitary sewer system and not have to relocate anything there. Um, and then in the bottom right, you can see the area where there is proposed curb, um, and pushing the trail to the north side, um, up against that curb right at the intersection of Huntington Drive. Uh, there is a culvert at about station 12 plus zero zero. We have met with some residents in this area just to discuss, uh, drainage concerns. It's very flat there currently. Um, so by pushing that trail to the north side, that allows us to grade that properly and, and ensure that water's flowing where we wanted to. Continuing towards the east, um, at Huntington Drive, again, that trail stays in the south side of the ditch, um, has a few curves to avoid those storm sewers. Um, one note on this is as we approach Connecticut Avenue South, uh, we have a proposed infiltration basin roughly a hundred feet long there. Um, that would be underground, so you can see in that detail, that would be beneath the top soil. Um, look basically the same as the rest of the ditch in the area, but just give a little bit more capacity for the water, uh, to infiltrate in the soil. There is an existing sidewalk on the west side of Connecticut Avenue South. Uh, we'd plan to connect into that, um, and then have a pedestrian crossing across Connecticut Avenue South and then across Heritage Drive at this location. Um, this is one location where we plan to have a flasher system and I'll show some details of that in just a moment. Uh, the last stretch of the trail is from Connecticut Avenue South continuing to Amber Avenue South. Um, again, very similar look. Uh, the one difference, the eastbound, um, lane has a turn lane into Amber Avenue South. Uh, so there is some curb and existing storm sewer in that location. So at that point, we would tie into that existing storm sewer, um, and drain to that curb. There's an eight-foot sidewalk at Amber Avenue South, so we'd connect into that. Um, kind of completing this gap and loop in the system. Um, and then April will mention in a few minutes two plans to extend, uh, sidewalk with a future project to the east. As I mentioned, there are two locations, uh, we plan to cross Heritage Drive. Um, this is a 40 mile an hour road currently, and so we wanted to ensure, um, pedestrian safety as they cross Heritage Drive to the north. Uh, the two locations are at Connect, Connecticut Avenue South and Seventh Avenue South. Um, so we have proposed flasher systems for each of these intersections. Some of the details for Connecticut Avenue South, um, the pedestrian crossing, right at the pedestrian crossing would be a flasher system with a push button, kind of in that center image there, similar to what you, um, have seen in many areas of the city. Um, this also calls for an advanced warning system proposed. You can see that far left picture, um, has the pedestrian head with the flasher. Um, and that would be roughly 200 feet on either side of that crosswalk, just warning, um, vehicles of any pedestrians that may be within the roadway. The flasher system at Seventh Avenue South, uh, proposed is a mast arm flasher system. So again, this is a 40 mile an hour roadway. Um, in this particular location, there is two turn lanes and two through lanes. So it's a very wide road, um, at this intersection. And so this mast arm just enables, um, vehicles to see the pedestrians as they make their way through that crosswalk.
Um, give a overview of the project financials. Um, estimated construction costs at just over 600,000, um, throwing in a, a $20,000 contingency and then soft costs for legal easements, uh, design, geotechnical, um, just over 166,000 for a total project cost of 795,000, just over as an estimate. Um, of note, the city did receive a, a grant in 2017 in the amount of 367,000 dollars uh, through the transportation alternatives grant, uh, to cover a portion of the construction cost. Uh, project schedule, uh, if approved tonight, uh, we would be sending the plans to state and federal review, um, so approval would be continued on agency review and approval. Uh, we would do bidding in April with award in May. Construction would take place this summer with project completion in October. Hunter mentioned, uh, kind of the next phase. So the city did apply for another transportation alternative grant, uh, to complete the trail along Heritage Drive. This last section, uh, would complete the trail from, uh, basically one end of the city to the other. Uh, the reason this section was left out with the last grant application is the properties that this goes in front of are all within the township. So there would be some additional easements and that acquisition process for, uh, this trail installation. But we'll find out later this year whether or not that transportation alternative grant is awarded. Um, with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Counsel, what questions do you have?
I noticed that there was a few spots where the trail kind of budged up because I posted some of the shrubbery or trees in the backyard. Are there any properties that would be affected and if so, would we?
So we did send out a, a letter last month. All of the trees and shrubs that need to be taken down for this project have already been taken down, uh, by public work staff. That's a requirement of the grant funding that they needed to be down, uh, by the end of, um, March. Um, so that's already taken care of for this project.
Do we know? Do we know the, uh, cost of the, so there's a lot into it, right? You got a lot of the, uh, infiltration or pedestrian sidewalk. Do we, or, um, signage? Do we know what the actual cost of the expected cost of a two minutes trail is going to be? I guess the reason I ask that is, uh, I remember when we were awarded this grant two, maybe three years ago, and I thought, obviously costs have changed, but I thought that by and large covered the whole project.
So the grants that the city received can fund up to 80% of the construction cost. This project did increase in cost. Um, the largest cost increase though was the pedestrian crossing improvements. So that mast arm, um, we added in those, uh, flashers, the pedestrian ahead signs, so the advanced warning systems. Um, and those were added as a recommendation from our traffic group because of the speed of the roadway and the curves that are located at those areas and then at Seventh, just because of the width. So, um, Hunter and I did take a look at that because the cost did increase. I keep in mind too, this grant was awarded in 2017, so material costs increased significantly from then as well.
Do we know, uh, six years ago, uh, I thought it was two or three. Uh, do we know what the cost at Seventh Street is? And the reason I ask is that's not, I mean, geograph, geographically it's close, but that's not actually tied to this project, right? And so that would be something we could do at another point as well.
I don't know the exact cost, but, um, one of the system was right around 80,000 and the other one was right around 90.
Yeah.
For the pedestrian.
Likely just north of 100, it would be a ballpark.
Both of them are right around that 90 to 100,000 dollars for the pedestrian crossing systems.
And that's where, being we're not adding a new trail, um, I like the pedestrian crossing. I, I think it's adds value, but we're not adding a new amenity that is enticing them. Whereas, uh, at Connecticut and Heritage, I feel like, um, that's something new we're adding. We want people to be safe. Okay, so we can see that we could get it down to, um, instead of 800,000, six, um, 700,000? With that?
I, i- in that ballpark, we could come back with exact numbers for you.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions or thoughts? I guess questions at this point?
Rob, how does this impact the budget? Was this planned and was this anticipated when you were going through the budgeting process going into this year, uh, this dollar amount?
Yeah, this was anticipated, uh, in our capital improvement plan adopted last spring. We had budgeted for, and in our budget, uh, approved for 2023, we had budgeted for Heritage Drive Trail, uh, continuation. This actually comes out of our regional sales tax dollars, uh, between all of the area cities. They have found this trail, uh, the trail on County Road One and the trail on Sixth Street South, um, as regionally significant. So we get a separate allocation of just over $2 million, which is paid over 20 years to fund these trails. So long answer, yes, it was, uh, identified in both the budget and capital improvement plan. And we do have funding to cover the estimated project costs.
And, and what was the dollar amount budget for this, for this year? Was it the full 800 or do you?
Oh, no, uh, because we had been awarded the grant at the time. I don't know the number off the top of my head, but, um, this doesn't come as a concern to me.
Okay.
Mayor Fitzsim, if, it was in between 600 and 700, $700,000 was what the grant application was for in 2017, closer to that, somewhere in that range.
Last question, you kind of added both projects in, the future project that we were just awarded. Thank you. Um, what percentage of that do we expect will be covered?
So we haven't been awarded that grant yet. Um, we'll find out later this year. Um, so for that project, uh, the ask was 486,000, just over 486,000 with a required match of 208. The grant can only cover the construction costs. It does not cover soft costs, the design, um, geotechnical construction administration.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions? Seeing none, thank you. Uh, counsel, we will look for discussion.
Mayor Fitzsim.
I got it.
Yeah, Anna.
Sorry, I just thought I'd add quickly, we just pulled up the capital improvement plan. So we were expecting 670,000 out of that sales tax fund. So I don't know, Hunter, can you go back to the, go back a couple of slides to the? Yeah, there you go. Um, so 670,000 is what we were budgeting for an expenditure, but we were also budgeting to receive, uh, 251,000. So we actually, the grant amount was 367,000. So if you do the rough math there of.
Why did, why did that change?
The.
Grant amount?
This was probably based on projected of what we were applying for and it's an 80/20. So you.
Oh.
Base it on the total project. But one thing to keep in mind too, is that, you know, just speaking of that pedestrian flasher, if you want to try to trim this down, and obviously building this fund could be advantageous for the mill site as a regional, as regional trail projects. So just something to think about is that if you, you know, leave extra funds in here, you could use it for something else.
Well, and I, I, I don't want to, um, you know, there's a neighborhood there that, that, to the south of, or to the north of Heritage that, you know, has a, a desire to rightfully so, to access those trails in a safe manner. I think it's great. But if I look at that hundred thousand dollars and that trail crossing system, I think about where else in our community could that have a larger impact than the one single neighborhood, right? And so, um, everyone playing Frogger on Pinecone at 15th Street North comes to mind for me that that similar system could go there at a same cost and have a greater community impact. And or, you know, the benefit of, of keeping costs low to your point to add it somewhere else.
Mayor, members of the council, um, a few years back, we did a crosswalk pedestrian study and did an analysis on a number of ones that we'd received comments on over the years. Um, and we prioritized and identified a, a number of pedestrian crossings. Um, so if you did pull that pedestrian crossing out of here, there are other grants you can apply for in the future and you could maybe package some of those, um, other high priority ones with this one as a project as well. But, um, we do have that, that study that was done and available, um, if you're interested at some point.
Tim, do you have something?
I just wanted, have we've gotten, uh, neighborhood or community feedback from, uh, looking at this project and what was it?
Um, we have gotten some neighborhood feedback and we've talked with them, met with a number of residents, um, mainly just around drainage and, and tree removal, not necessarily the pedestrian crossing part of it. Um, the reason that the Seventh Street Crossing was added is because it was on that priority list. And since this project was happening along this core, um, it was included with the project, but nothing specific to the crossings.
Counsel, any other discussion?
I guess my only thought is, um, it's a highly trafficked road. Uh, cars do go pretty quickly. Um, the trail system will be new to the road. And so I guess I, I have concerns with removing a safety component on a road that's that heavily trafficked, but I certainly understand the questioning and, and, you know, potential reallocation of dollars. But it's a pretty, pretty high trafficked and, and fast road.
Any other comments?
Yeah, we tend to agree. I think raising the question, um, has legitimacy behind it and we need to be careful on where we put these, they're not cheap. Um, but to the points that Jill stated and the 40 mile per hour is the speed limit, but I'll know that it's probably above that. And the trail connecting or giving access for multiple neighborhoods and it's not far off from, um, other apartments in the area. So I think, um, it's, it's beneficial to keep it where it is.
Mayor, member of the council, offer up another option potentially. Um, we could bid the project with that pedestrian crossing as an alternate and see how the bids come in for the actual cost of the project. And we could determine at that time whether or not you'd want to move forward with the pedestrian crossing at Seventh.
Yeah, I'd, I'd certainly be, uh, inclined for that. And I guess as a follow-up, uh, you mentioned the study that was completed. Do we know what the highest priority intersection was?
I, I don't offhand, Mayor Fitzsim, but I can circle back with that information.
Alex brings up a great point of, of, you know, the multifamily units in that area. Majority of those are south of that area and I think about Roberts, uh, Roberts and I think at Seventh Street there, um, which has a significant amount of crossing there as well. Without, you know, it's a 40 mile an hour as well, without advanced warning, um, would actually impact more people, uh, than, than what this one would. But I guess I'd be supportive of, of going, uh, the route of having it as an add-on so we can understand what the actual cost comes in and continue to have conversations. Jed?
Yeah, I'd also wanted to be an alternate. Um, I think the other thing I'm concerned from the safety perspective on that road specifically is it seems like there's a curve right before you get to that crossing, which I, I know if you ever tried to pull out of one of those neighborhoods, sometimes it's very difficult to just even in a car. So that, that would be one of those, but I'd also love to see that full report back on uh, kind of the studies, so we can make a conscious decision if we're going to spend these dollars, is that the best place for us to do that in?
Um, I would recommend keeping what, what we have proposed in the plan of a traffic group in the studies they've done and just the speed. Um, that would be our recommended crossing treatment, so I would recommend staying with what's proposed.
Yep, you're correct. I apologize for that. Um, I think to, to Alex's point though, um, not necessarily changing the crossing designed at that intersection, um, but could we have a uh, you know, the traditional crossing, I guess I'll call it, or the warning sign crossing as a bid alternate in that the evaluation for me is if we can apply three advanced warning signals without the big uh, overhang at three different heavy traveled intersections for the same cost as this one intersection. I know the route I would rather go, but unless I have the actual cost of that, I can't make that decision. So I'm wondering if we could get it as an alternate, just so we could evaluate the cost of it and then make that decision.
I'm going to look up real quick, um, our estimate for those two different crossings. So the project has the mast arm crossing and it has more of the traditional type crossing. There wasn't a huge cost difference between the two, just because they both have different advanced warning systems. And the one at Connecticut has lights that go on with it.
Because that one is, uh, that one has two systems each side, right? It's the advanced warning. Any other questions while she's reviewing that?
Hunter, do you know where?
Mayor Fitzsim, hmm, one thing I'll add, when you're thinking about, um, bidding it as a alternate, it could be advantageous for us as we're going, we'll be starting our capital improvement planning too, so you guys are both for other crossings, but then also for this fund as a whole. Just having more awareness of, okay, what other projects in the future are we planning to use this fund for, or need to have this fund set aside for, to be able to make a better decision around opportunity costs of using those funds for this pedestrian flasher system, a different one, or a completely different trail altogether.
Thank you, and, and that's really what I'm trying to get at is, um, I look at, at Pine Cone and Second Street South, right? Like, crossing through that intersection, what does a hundred thousand dollars get us for some level of notification there? Which is far more traveled than Seventh and Heritage.
Yeah, and to April's point, we can, you know, we can package some of those pedestrian flasher systems together in a future TA app down the road and save the dollars now on this one, build up that fund a little bit. Um, and we'll have more visibility of that fund as we go through our capital improvement planning, so it just might make sense to just do it as an alternate. You guys can make a decision, once you see the actual real cost, once bids come back, but it, it could make a lot of sense to um, take that off of this particular application, once you know more about what this fund is going to be used for in the future, or could be used for in the future.
Yeah, and just to add to what Anna said, so this fund that we're paying for the trail and flasher system out of, uh, like I said, was regional sales tax specifically for trail projects on County Road One, Heritage Drive and Sixth Street. So, if you were to consider instead doing, um, a pedestrian crossing on Pine Cone and Second, that would actually have to come out of a separate fund, uh, which may mean we don't have the funds available. Uh, it just depends on where that alternate
Sure.
would be placed and what fund would be applicable for that project. So, a little more complexity to this than probably perceived, but just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Um, so we're estimating the crosswalk flasher system at Seventh Street to be ninety-four thousand five hundred, and the pedestrian system at Connecticut to be eighty-eight thousand, so not a significant difference, so I would stick with my recommendation of to bid the alternate of the system as proposed.
Counsel, do we have a motion? As presented? With the alternate as crossing. We have a motion, uh, to approve with the alternate being bid as, or the crossing being at Seventh Street being bid as an alternate. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll say in it.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Onto public hearings. We have a rezoned preliminary and final plat for River Crossings Second Edition. And this is where we'll get to hear from you.
Mayor and members of the council in front of you is the preliminary and final plat for River Crossing Second Edition. Um, the first item to this two-part, uh, public hearing is the rezone part of it. Um, but First Planning Commission reviewed, um, the rezone and the preliminary and final plat and recommended approval of this last week, the requested plan by the developer who unfortunately had some medical things, so he was unable to come here tonight. But I feel that I'm confident with answering his questions with the development as well. But his requested plan first is to rezone Lot Two, um, that you can see on the preliminary plat and final plat, and then plat four B two general business lots. Um, I've highlighted that it is two lots and one outlot actually replatted with the only additional lot is Lot Two. First is the applicant is proposing to rezone Lot Two that I've identified there from R one single family residential to B two general business district. This specific lot was purchased after the initial River Crossings plat. So that's why this is at a later time. The proposed commercial development, like I've stated, requires a rezone prior to the preliminary and final plat approval. This request follows a future land use that was adopted by the city of this specific area as well. Um, and then I'll just go into the preliminary and final plat, and I'll take questions after that. So the preliminary and final plat, like I've stated, is for general business lots. Lot one and three and four were part of River Crossing's first edition, which was plotted in twenty twenty-one. This, this preliminary and final plat is consistent with the first edition of River Crossings, and it's consistent altogether. I would, would just like to highlight that this is just the preliminary and final plating in that the specific developments would have to go through site plan approval, once that would come into the city. All comments by zoning engineering, police and fire departments must be resolved um, for approval of this plat, and I'd just like to mention that, um, the city and the developer are working through some engineering comments, but we anticipate meeting those comments, um, with no further issues. The other thing I'd like to highlight, um, is that this development is subject to trunk storm water, sewer, and park fees for Lot Two and Three only as Outlot A or Lot Three was, um, after, and then Lot Two is the hanky lot that you see there, so they're only paying for the two lots because they were paid previously. Um, what I'd be asking tonight is open a public hearing, a separate motion to approve the rezone request from R one single family residential to B two, and then a separate motion to approve the preliminary and final plat for River Crossing Second Edition, contingent upon meeting staff comments that I've discussed. And with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Counsel, before we open the public hearing, do you have any questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on the rezone and preliminary and final plat for River Crossing Second Edition, please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. I appreciate hearing that. Um, I know we went through a lot with that. Do you have anything specific to this rezone or, uh, this preliminary plat? I really got to keep you to the rezone of this and the preliminary and final plat. We don't. At this point, it's just, um, converting from R one to B two, so it'll be general business of sorts. On this, there's, uh, citing retail. But I'm not sure what that means. Sure, yep. Thank you very much. Second call for anyone wishing to testify on the rezone preliminary and final plat. Jim, I'll give you the third chance. No? No takers? All right. Third and final call on the rezone preliminary and final plat. Seeing none, I'll close that public hearing. Uh, counsel, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, um, we need two motions or two actions on this. One is the rezone from R one to B two. And the second one will be preliminary and final plat.
I'll make a motion to move rezoning of the property from R one to B two general business.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and second on the rezone from R one to B two. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Second one we're looking for is a preliminary and final plat. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Move into department reports, Public Works and Engineering. John, what do you got for us?
I think April's taken tonight.
Mayor, members of the council, you have our reports. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, but before that, um, I'd like to just highlight, um, a couple items specific to the grant, since that um, been asking a number of questions, uh, related to that, which I think is great. Um, so just want to give a, a brief summary on, uh, grants that we received recently, and then, um, also ones that are currently out for consideration and ones that we have out on our radar. Um, the city's re- recently received, uh, four different grants. Uh, one related to Fifteenth Street North and the purchase of that right-of-way, um, for, uh, just over nine hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Um, received a decontamination grant for the Phase Two, um, environmental at the, um, AIM paper mill site that you guys approved contingent on, uh, obtaining that property. City also received a Highway Safety Improvement Program grant for four hundred thousand for the traffic light at Pine Cone Road and Seventh Street North. Uh, that's a project that is in the CIP budget, um, for the full amount, and so we did receive a grant to help, uh, cover the costs of that project. Um, and then the city also did receive the CRP grant uh, for the design of the regional trail, uh, on the paper mill site, so tonight we are considering the construction costs of that trail. The city has already received a grant, uh, to help with the planning and design of that trail. A couple grants that the, that are pending, that have been applied for. Um, we have a second grant for the Pine Cone Road and Seventh Street North intersection. Uh, if that second grant is, uh, obtained, we'd be looking at doing some additional pedestrian crossing improvements and a trail or sidewalk connecting that intersection to the Pine Cone Central Boulevard, uh, roadway. Um, I mentioned earlier tonight, the last phase of that Heritage Drive Trail grant application. Um, and then, uh, the city did put in congressional requests to help cover the gap in the right-of-way acquisition for Fifteen Street North. Um, so those, I'll, um, find out later this year whether or not that the city, uh, has awarded those grants. And then grants that are on the radar are the four that, uh, were in front of you, the seeding for resolutions, and then we are just keeping on our radar different deed redevelopment grants for the paper mill site as that project moves forward. Um, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on our monthly report.
And I would be happy, happy to answer.
Any questions for engineering? Or Public Works? Thank you, both. Uh, Fire is absent, you can read that report. Uh, Police?
Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I have nothing to add, other than I just want to point out, uh, if it's not obvious why we're getting so many drug recognition experts on our department is, uh, obviously the concern of marijuana legalization, which you're going to have to deal with probably at some point this year. We need to find a way to, to get our staff trained up to be able to help identify those drivers that are on the street. Uh, so having three hundred departments is a huge deal for us. Um, and then to have someone that's going to be an instructor that can then refresh the other two, it's going to be huge for us. That service is also offered to other agencies, not just within our community, but I would hope other law enforcement agencies are doing the same thing we are. So, I would suspect, uh, in the future, you maybe see some other names come forward that are going to be doing the same training from the department. With that, I'll happy, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Counsel, it's final night. Load it up. Nothing? Jed?
I was gonna ask where his first vacation is gonna be.
It's a public meeting though, so I don't know. All right, I will break what I just said earlier. Uh, thank you Chief Fuse.
Thank you.
Admin?
Mayor, members of the council, you have my report. Two quick things I will, um, add here. We did receive the MyLars for the AIM development. Uh, Ryan signed them tonight, and so those will go to Benton County tomorrow for signatures from four staff people there. And then once the title office receives a MyLars, they're willing to schedule closing. So it feels a lot more real at this point. It's close, it's really close, so we'll make sure to It's close, it's really close, so we'll make sure to watch that closely. And then lastly, I just thought I'd give a quick update on the compost site, even though there's, uh, several feet of snow outside, people are concerned about our compost site, and calling for permits. So the permitting process will be exactly the same as last year, um, however, we are adding the gate, it was supposed to be installed next Monday, it looks like it'll be the following Monday, just with, uh, weather conditions, but we are moving forward on that automated gate process, permitting process will all be the same, they'll use the same permit scan it to get the gate to open, so we're excited for installation in the next two weeks for that as well.
Awesome.
Question? Do we have staff that is going to be out there during this first month or so, as they try to drive through their little gate?
It'll be a council welcome packet.
Oh, yeah, we have, we have to take weekends, it sounds like.
Yeah, we'll take the weekends again.
If only we knew someone retiring, yeah.
Yes, we will have staff, and we will also have signage with the phone number, so we're anticipating that we'll have some, some calls, uh, initially.
Anna, just, real quickly, will it be twenty-four seven, or John? No.
No. No, it won't be, once dark, no, it'll be daylight hours, really seven days a week we plan on.
Yeah, and we'll communicate out those hours, we're still gonna, we want to learn the operations of the gate and the, um, technology behind it of setting those hours, but we can set them and adjust them, um, so we're, we're likely going to do it with, um, daytime hours. And there are security cameras out there as well, so obviously, having the cameras will be helpful with that.
Yeah, the cameras are up and running right now, so we got that part done.
Thank you, Finance?
Good evening, you have my dashboard in your packets as well, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Counsel, any questions for Finance? Seeing none, thank you. Community Development?
Mayor, members of council, you have my dashboard in your packet. Um, a few things I would highlight is, I will make it to Benton County tomorrow and get that recorded, I got it on my schedule, and I'd just like to highlight that, um, in the next few months here, for sure, three weeks, we'll get more commercial permitting coming in, so anticipating that reflected on our next or future dashboards as well, um, and we have fully transitioned to our new permitting software, um, that is now up and running, fingers crossed, so, um, it's working great, and it is a lot more efficient. I'll take any questions if you have any.
Any questions?
I got one. I did talk to our Benton County Commissioner at the APO meeting, and they are on board, so I don't foresee any, he, he was very adamant to come out and seek me out and say, I'm sorry for the, uh, confusion and having to get our attorneys involved, but they, uh, they, they said they're on board and they're ready to go, so.
Nothing against getting attorneys involved, though.
So, Tim, we can give him your number tomorrow when we're over there, trying to get signatures?
Yeah, we heard the same thing three months ago. Good luck tomorrow, and thank you for that teaser of more commercial coming. Uh, we will now move into a closed meeting session. For that, I need a motion and second to close the meeting.
I'll move to close the meeting.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? We are in closed session.